Approval of a mural as presented by Jerry Tanges. After having a discussion with our law director, Billy advised it's not necessary since we have, currently there's no restrictions regarding a mural on a privately owned building. Therefore, there's no reason to have to approve it. However, we are going to keep item K4, which will allow us to have a discussion, possibly action on creating a board or adding it onto the Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee for a, to adopt some rules and be a review board for that. With that said, now that that is not on the agenda, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda? Come on up, Jerry.
For the record, can you state your name? And I think you have to write your name and email address?
Address and phone number.
Address and phone number, please.
Okay, I'll write it after I'm done. I'm Jerry Tanges, I'm the one that was on your agenda on the second page. Currently, we're raising funds, just bring everybody up on speed. It was in the paper a week or so ago, and about the mural that we're looking at putting on the side of my building. We addressed this years ago, it wasn't the right time. Well, it is now, because right now, this is the artist's rendition of what is going to be going on the side of my building. It'll be 24 feet high by 30 feet wide. It's going to be painted by an artist known as Dave Rickard of Rickard Art. He is a native of Deschler. He's the one that did the mural of Deschler. He has been hired, along with my fiancee and I, we've been sending letters out to different businesses, and she's never done anything like this before. She was like a dog with a bone. She went after a grant. She found out about it through the Ohio Arts Councils, the State of Ohio. 28 days, we had a $5,000 grant. She put together a really nice letter, and to date, we have the Ohio Arts Councils giving us $5,000. My business is donating 500, her business is donating 500, the Henry County Chamber has committed $1,000, and I just heard from the Napoleon Rotary, they are going to be donating $500. So, this total project and investment is a $10,000 project, and to date, we have $7,500. So, we're well past the stage of where it's going to happen. Dave Rickard has been hired for the spring. We have not come up with a date yet. He said it will take approximately one week. I don't know how he's going to do it in one week, but more power to him. We have done our research, and we have talked to our neighbors, which is the Emmanuel Lutheran Church. I had a meeting with their church council. Forty-five minutes after I talked to them, I got a text message from their board president saying, "What can they do to help?" They approved unanimously. So, it's going to be a great asset. We think it's going to be an asset to the Napoleon. And I did tell the church, I said, "The only complaint that I'm anticipating is more people using your parking lot to stop and take pictures." This Dave Rickard has a following. People travel all over where his artwork is. So, we're hoping that that same, they stop in Napoleon. And I had a meeting with Joel Miller today. They're looking, I'm not computer savvy or anything like that, looking to put an app right beside the mural, where they can go to that, and it'll bring up all the businesses in the entire city. 100% approved. It's a great idea, because you get them from out of town, if they're not familiar, they're not going to wonder. But if you tap on, they can go on their cellphone, they'll find it. So, I think that's a great idea. Everybody that is donating, they will be acknowledged on the mural. When it's done, we're hoping to have ribbon cutting. I want to make it a little bit of an event. We decided with side of my building, if you take that mural off my building, it's a big brick building that nobody ever knew where it was. So, now, we're going to be noticed. So, I just want to, if anybody has any questions, I mean, we've, yeah, go ahead.
Jerry, what's the picture of, generally?
What it is, if you would stand in the intersection of Clinton and Perry Street and look south on Perry. It's from a 1920's postcard that I bought in Jackson, Michigan. That is the theme of it. The artist has been told that he will have to do details, because there are power poles with power lines, and it has to be in the mural also. I put out a thing on my Facebook account yesterday, and just put it out there for people to say yes, no, otherwise. We got one question regarding the state money. He was questioning, it was his tax dollars, which is fine, I'm glad he said it, but we had 52 people that commented. The comments came in from ours, California and South Africa, of support of it. So, it's going to happen. You know, we're hoping the Henry County Bank has expressed interest of assisting. There will be a fund set up at the Henry County Bank to donate, so it goes directly into them.
You say you've been working on this for a couple of years. What sparked this idea for you?
It was an ugly building. I needed to do something. It was an ugly building, and it's a billboard. You come around, you turn left on the State Route 108, in between Emmanuel Lutheran Church and what used to be Family Video, and you're, it's going to hit you right in the face. And that's what we want. I'd like to see if this goes well, which I'm fully anticipating. I would be willing to help and assist anybody with this, because the state asked if we had any other projects that we had in mind, and I said we did, they gave us another resource for another grant, and this gentleman asked if we would be applying for it next year. So, that was their maximum amount for Henry County that they could give. So, we got the max. So, we have a couple of other projects we'd like to look on, we're doing research right now, but the one that we would do would be 200 times larger than this. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and I'll fill your paperwork out.
Thank you for letting us know, appreciate it, Jerry.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F. Reports from council committees. Electric committee met on January 13th, 2020. Lori?
Thank you, Council President. We approved the January 2020 Power Supply Cost Adjustment Factor and discussed the substations.
Thank you. Also, Water Sewer Refuge Recycling and Litter Committee met on January 13th as well.
Was given an update on the wastewater treatment plant Phase 1 project and long-term control plan project, and also, we tabled the refuse collection rules.
Thank you. And F3 is Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee met on January 13th. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommended that the Uni-Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee be the reviewing board for murals and adopt rules, which will be discussed later in item K4.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And item 4, Parks and Rec Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items. Moving into item H, Introduction of New Ordinances and Resolutions. Ordinance Number 001-20, an ordinance amending the current investment policy in and for the City of Napoleon, Ohio. Investment Policy Number IP16-0003, amending ordinance number 013-16, and Policy Number 0002, as was periodically amended. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. This is to comply with Ohio revised code changes and a couple of housekeeping items.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Rocks, please call a roll.
Jeff C., Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to second read. Item I is second read in ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance Number 105-19, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $3,500,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the construction of a municipal swimming pool with related facilities and appurtenances, including the demolition of existing facilities, together with all necessary and related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. $500,000 of this will be to pay back Fund 503, and then, it's a maximum up to the 3.5 million for the pool. If we don't have an estimate by the time we go out, and we probably need it within this next week, then we'll do it for the 3.5 million. We're asking for suspension so that we can combine it with the water note, and it'll sell on February 11th.
Thank you. We have a motion for suspension. Second. Hey, Rocks, please call a roll on suspension.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Have any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on second read under suspension. Moving on to item J, third reads of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance Number 098-19, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in a maximum principal amount of $2,352,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal water system by improving and rehabilitating the existing water treatment plant and related storage facilities, rehabilitating the elevated storage tanks, and acquiring and improving related interest in real property, together with all necessary and related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kelly?
I don't have anything new to add.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item J2 is ordinance Number 099-19, an ordinance authorizing a pay increase for City of Napoleon, Ohio Law Director, and declaring an emergency.
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thank you.
That has passed on third read. Moving on to item J3 is ordinance Number 100-19, ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the City of Napoleon, Ohio City Manager, and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments? Oh, he's not here, maybe we don't have to pass this.
Table it.
Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Moving on to item J4, ordinance Number 101-19, an ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the City of Napoleon, Ohio Finance Director, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
They're playing games with you.
Any questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item J5.
None of those were given, those were all earned, that's for sure.
Appreciate you saying so.
Thank you.
J5, Resolution Number 102-19, a resolution authorizing a contribution to the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry Coney, Ohio, in and for the year 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Anything to add on this one?
Nothing new that I'm aware of, no.
Any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Okay, moving on to item K, Good to the City. K1 is Discussion or Action on PSCAF for January 2020, has three-month average factor 0.01695, and JV2 0.062811. And I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this? So, our electric committee chair is right here, he can answer any. Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Item K2, Discussion or Action, New Aquatic Center Concession Area. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Billy, would you like to start the discussion?
Sure. I don't know anything about the pool.
All right. Tony here? Come on up, Tony.
Haven't touched that in a year or so.
No, sure. I like pools. First, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting to help clarify some of this stuff. I have the floor plan and the site plan here. I know I put a memo in the packet. Specifically, the concessions area, if you look at where the building is proposed, the concession area was proposed for the north, excuse me, south, northeast corner, and the reason for that is, is that what we're trying to accomplish is to get most of the visitors of the concession stand out of the main area of flow. We believe that this, this area of deck space, which is right in front of the zero-entry area, will likely be very congested. Large playground piece here, some spray features will be positioned there, so we believe not only will swimmers be there, parents, people are just going to be watching, this is going to be our kitty area here. So, having, and I know there was a question, why wouldn't we have it on this side? We believe with the window here, and a lot of folks that are, would be visiting here and cutting off that fence here, we would have a lot of congestion there. So, having it on this side, having access window facing the north, outside of the fenced area would also serve back here, which is where a ball diamond area is, could actually even serve possibly some golf course patrons. And then, certainly, as we move to the south, and there's some activity there on the southern part parts of Lemon Park, we can certainly put some signage here on a fence that will be here, that would direct folks to the side where we would have our concession window to serve the outside patrons. I know that initially, what the thought was, is that we wanted to try to share some resources with the golf course, just wasn't able to do that, to get all three, so the main focus was at least try to serve outside patrons with inside patrons. Along with a lot of other things that we needed to do, which was, we had to fit a lot of toilet space in here, some, we are required by building code to have a certain number of toilets based on the size of this fenced-in area. In fact, we were actually asked originally to have several more, but we were able to negotiate that down, so, to get it to where we are. So, if you wonder why there's so many facilities there, that's because it's required. So, can I answer any of their questions, too?
Once, once it was explained to me that if it was on the south instead of on the north, that would add a whole lot more congestion, all my questions went away. Like I said two weeks ago, I'm sure it made sense, I just couldn't see it. Once I saw that, that makes sense to me now. Sure, I'm fine.
One of the other things that we thought was important, not just for the concession area, but for the entire facility, is this, this side here will also provide some built-in shade, as the sun sets back this way, this building should shade, and then, we're going to also add some shade structures, they're called sales structures here, so this deck space would be large enough where we could maybe put some different tables, other tables and chairs and such, so that, once you get a concession, you can sit there, and again, stay away from congested areas. Because we certainly hope that it's going to be very crowded, I mean, that's the idea. So, a lot of, lot of thought has been given to the floor plan, probably more, more so than really anything else, because everybody wants to get it right, and we want to make sure we, it's functional there. I know that while we have a lot of pieces here, the whole idea is, we don't want people in here, we want them at the pool, but we still have to make sure it's functional here. So, I think the commission has done a really good job, and they've been great in assisting me, and Chad and I, we meet frequently with Peter Minn, and things are moving along very nicely.
Tony, I can't see from here, but are the restrooms on like an outside wall? Like they're at the very?
Yes, so what we have is, we have your normal two restroom slash shower areas on the inside, and then, what we are also putting in are family restrooms, where they're actually, you'll have access to them from the outside, so they're basically lined up there. So, if mothers, fathers have young children, they can quickly access those, unlockable, so they're right there, and they're right next to them. So, we've got two of them positioned there that would have access there. These two restrooms here, again, those were added because we needed the fixtures. Those are not going to be for the outside. We considered it, but we were told that if we do make those restrooms just accessible to the outside, that would reduce the number of fixtures that are required in, inside that building, and so we would actually have to add more. So, we decided to keep the doors here on the inside.
So, it couldn't be used if the pool is closed? Couldn't you use those restrooms for the park? Kind of like you have at other parks, we have, we wouldn't be able to access them? Thought it would be nice to have additional?
And again, we, we thought about that, we thought maybe that would be a good thing we could do, in fact, we had that initially on the plan, but we were told that that cannot be the case, and we'd have to try to find another place to add these back in someplace. We would actually add them.
Tony, going back to the concessions, the concession that would face the parking lot, is there adequate space there? If that area does get congested, far enough away from the parking lot?
Sure, yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of space here. There's probably more space on this side than there actually would be over here. This will kind of get, the way it would line up and the way the parking lot is, this will actually be a little bit closer. This would be the porch extension, likely that won't be part of the build, it's just an option, but the parking lot actually moves closer to the building on this side, and this side, there's actually a lot more space, so we should be able to have adequate.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank, thank you for all your hard work with it. Chad, you also?
Thanks, sir.
Billy, do we need to approve this to go back into?
I believe at the last council meeting, Joel was looking for approval of plans and specifications. I think you did that minus the location of the concession stand, so if you wanted to have a motion to approve that specific item, that might be a good idea.
Okay. Which I believe, we do have a motion in a second now. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Moving on to item K4, Discussion or Action to have Municipal Property Buildings Land Use and Economic Development Committee as the reviewing board for murals and adopt rules, and then, we would direct the law director to draft legislation. I'm open for any comments or suggestions regarding this.
Sure. If I could, Council President, start on this one. Point one, as far as assigning a topic to a committee, you wouldn't need legislation for that. It's in the charter, and it's in the council rules that you can do so. As far as potentially adopting rules regarding murals, in no way do I want to quash any discussion on that topic. It's something that can be discussed in committee and then further in council. I would just caution that when we start to talk about regulating murals and art as a municipality, we start to run into some potential First Amendment problems. So, if the topic wanted to, if you wanted to send the topic back to the committee, to municipal properties, I would attend the next meeting and attempt to do some research prior to, to see how some other municipalities, if they do at all, regulate murals and art on the side of buildings and such. As we stand right now, we don't, we don't have any regulations on that topic, so certainly, we could, we could discuss this and see how council wants to move forward, fashioning potentially some, some rules regarding these, or not, depending on what council decides, but be happy to show up to that meeting and have that discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else have any thoughts or suggestions? I think that's a great idea to at least explore what other municipalities have done, and we can go from there.
Have you looked at all yet, Billy?
I haven't, we had this conversation, I mean, I looked at our rules for a bit. Once I saw that this was on the agenda, I was like, oh, okay, hold on, and decided I would look, you know, first off, at our stuff, started to try to look, and I'm not finding a lot currently. I think most municipalities kind of stay out of it, but that's not my final answer at this point. I've just started to research it a bit, so if I can find any, you know, I'll run it past some, some case law, see if I think it would pass muster in the court system, and we can kind of go from there.
Okay. Sounds good. Would you like to have it back in the?
Please refer it back to the committee.
Please do that. Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions before we move on? Hey, hearing none. Moving on to item K5, it's direct law directors to draft legislation, authorizing Lori Secle as the OMEA delegate. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Lori, you want to do this?
Yes, I do.
Rocks, please call a roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Congratulations. Item K6, Discussion or Action to Soul Source GIS Implementation Project, and direct the law director to draft legislation. Move a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comments regarding this? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff C.?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And item K7, Discussion or Action to participate in the ODOT 2020 Purchasing Program for Crack Sealing, and direct the law director to draft legislation.
Motion. Second.
Chad looks kind of bored back there. Chad, you want to kind of give us a little bit of an update on this, and?
Sure. The contract we're operating under is the same contract as last year on the state level. If we do it before April, the problem we have is the legislation we passed last year to do this, it says for the 2019 crack ceiling. So, we need to have the legislation drafted for the 2020 crack ceiling contract for us to be able to buy off the state term contract. So, we're hoping to get that moving forward quickly, so we can get in under this year's, under the current prices, which will change with the new contract.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Is that kind of like the salt contract, where we say we're going to buy so much and then tell us the price later, we're going to buy so much crack?
No. We know the, we know the amount, we know, we know the price on this one already.
Okay.
The suppliers had to provide that price last year to get on the contract, so it's, it's completely different. The salt one is one of a kind.
Okay.
Okay. Rox, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Item K eight, discussion reaction, appointments to the tax incentive review council, T I R C, for 2020. The people that were on it last time was Mr. Commodore.
Two Jeffs.
Two Jeffs?
Mm-hmm.
Did both want to do it again?
Sure, I will.
Okay. Can we do one motion for both or?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Some.
All right, good timing. Rox, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 All right. Okay, we'll go around the table here. Start with Billy's and Joel's in here.
Nothing, nothing this time.
All right. Ross?
Great job on the snow removal. That's really all I have.
Thank you. Ken?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Good job on the snow removal.
Jeffrey?
Third for me on the snow removal, good job, and kudos to the police department and the canine Luke on the catch and?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mayor?
The CIC is working on a workforce development. Todd West, Giants Council, Patrick Henry, the administration, Patrick Henry's made one of his, his tasks to get, to get Patrick Henry kids in front of local employers, April, May timeframe of their senior year, to kind of do an open kind of interview day with some local employers. I think some local other schools are going to tag on, maybe Liberty Center, maybe Holgate. So that's kind of in the process here going forward. So that's what's going on right now in CIC. Echo, we also said about the snow removal, when we don't want to be out there, they're out there pushing the snow, so we really appreciate that. So that's all I had, thank you.
Dan?
The only thing I have is, Safety and Human Resources will meet next Monday, but we will move it up to seven since the finance isn't meeting, and that is mainly to deal with Chief O'Brien's issue, correct, sir?
Yep.
So that time will work for you, sir?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Lori?
Just a nice address, mayor.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Jeff?
Have nothing.
Kelly?
I would just like to request an execo session for personnel, please.
Thank you. One thing I have is, I did have a resident, resident contact me and asked me why he can no longer access the police radio, or police activity on his scanner. So we have Chief Mack here to kind of give us that answer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things that kind of echoed what the mayor said in his address is, where hopefully we're in that last stretch of radio transitions for the police and fire in 2020. We're, in theory, we're in the last stretch, we're just not real sure how long that straightaway is at the, before we see the finish line. We're, they're currently planning, we're working through Henry County issues up at their dispatch center, getting mines pretty much ready to roll. Chief O'Brien and I have done a soft launch, is what we've been calling it, which is basically, we've moved, for the most part, our operations to the new frequencies and trying to identify the bugs, the coverage areas, things like that that we might need to deal with. For Chief O'Brien, we've been, we've moved everything but fire operations to the new frequency, and that's because the county still hasn't got their piece in play, so any mutual aid type things, we're still broadcasting on the old VHF radios. As far as police, most of our traffic's been on the new system, and probably by the end of the week, we'll be completely on the new system. What's that mean to the citizens? The old scanners probably won't work. You'll have to, you know, if there is still interested in it, at some point, I'm sure someone will broadcast it on the internet, and I'm sure that's not too far away from someone doing it. And the other thing is, you'll just have to buy a scanner that can do the 700 system, 7, 800 mark system, megahertz.
So when we talked earlier, it's similar to getting a, needing to upgrade a cell phone because of the?
The scanners that have worked for, as long as I've been an officer and beyond, are no longer working for the new digital frequencies.
Okay.
So they'll just have to upgrade their technology if they still want to listen. Chief O'Brien is actually putting like a lot of stuff out on Twitter for his response, so someone's interested in fire and where they're going to hear sirens, his Twitter page would be a key piece to at least get the initial information out.
Chief, do you have anything else to add, or?
The only thing I have is that if somebody, if somebody asks, tell them it is, what it's called is, it's called a P-25. So when they look for the scanner, it is a little bit more pricier than what this conventional system that we're on now. So the VHF system is not, we're moving to a digital system, and digital means the P-25 in the scanner. So if they are looking for those, it'll be a P-25. Now, I know that if you've seen on our Facebook, when we do list those runs, we have the link there. We are trying to figure out how we will be able to at least get that radio traffic on through the link. So if that's going to help, because I do know that the, the price of those scanners on the digital side are, are more money, so. But P-25, if they search it, that's how they'll be able to find it.
Great, thank you, and I'm sure that's been a headache for both of you, trying to coordinate this and, and make this work, so.
There are a lot of things that come up in projects like this.
Well, we've been?
Technology.
Yeah. You know, it is nice to finally get to this point, at least. This has been a project that we've been working on, you know, for three years now. So it's, it's finally starting to come to light, and it's, it's working, and the soft launch is going well, and we can hope that they will finish the sheriff's office and be able to do a soft launches, you know, as well, too, so we don't just jump onto it, kind of get to, you know, learn it. The VHF system will still be maintained in the background, so therefore, if we have any, you know, issues, that we can easily move back over to it, so. But yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty exciting to, to know now that we're actually able to give the first responders, at least in the fire service, multiple channels to be able to operate on, where before, it was one channel for the entire county and, and one channel for the fire department at, in the city. And so being able to run water supply or operations or different things that are happening on the fire ground on different channels, or just different incidents altogether. So there's been many a times that we've had that structured fire with multiple EMS calls, and all that radio traffic is still on the same one. So it'll be really nice to, to be able to get to this new system.
When you say that VHS system is still running in the background, does that mean each firefighter and police officer, they have to carry a separate radio also?
So, yeah, what that means is the VHF is still going to be our paging procedure, so that's still how it gets sent over on the pagers. If you remember, we replaced the pagers last year at the fire department, and those pagers are a dual-band pager, so they do do the P-25 or the digital side and the VHF side. So this guarantees that the paging will still go out and still get to the members, but the, so that's why it's going to be maintained there. It's also going to be maintained because that's how all the alarm systems are set up within the city and go back to the dispatch center. It's also how the utilities is, you know, talks back to the dispatch center. So for us, after we're on the new system, really, it's, it's two radios in the back at dispatch that are hardwired together, that'll simulcast over both of them, and get our paging over is really what it, what it is.
You just won't hear any of the traffic coming back to dispatch.
Correct.
Unless you have a new, new scanner.
Right.
Or new technology.
You'll only hear what the dispatcher says.
Well, sounds very complicated, kind of like, you know, I turn my light switch on, lights come on, I have no idea how that happens, and I would think it's the same thing, if I call 911 and then, you know, a minute later I hear sirens, I don't realize how much goes into that.
And even in police operations, the extra channels are going to be well overdue. I mean, I know just in my tenure, we've delayed two parades because of police emergencies happening, and we delayed the start because I had to clear the channels, waiting, for this last one, waiting for a domestic to complete before I get 10 auxiliary units talking about closing the streets down. So now I can move that traffic off that band and be able to run my parade route while police operations goes, goes on without any interruptions, so. It's, it's key for both our operations.
Right.
So we are, we are really appreciative of your city council and also Henry County Commissioners for really helping us make this project happen, because there was just no way that that would ever happen without all that support, so.
Even from the state legislator.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you for the information.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, and the only other thing I have is, great job with your speech today.
Thank you.
And awesome job for operations with the snow removal. You have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Come out of the executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes.